What we're going to do is a history, a brief history of what we have for government in the city of Crestview, why we have it, and how we got it. And then, we will discuss the options available besides what we already have. And I'll wrap it up by speaking on behalf of the city council, and that is, what we would have to do from this point forward if we decided that we wanted to change the type of government that we have. So, I'm not sure who's going to cover the history. The mayor's going to cover the history, and so I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Cato.
I'm going to talk about, a little bit about, the history and how we've gotten to the point that we are today, with the type of government structure that we have. As you know, we just celebrated our 100th birthday. It was really interesting, this morning, I was in part of the CRA meeting, and right behind me there was the minutes of the first town of Crestview meeting in 1916. It was interesting, it was pretty simple then, and not quite that simple anymore. Through the years, the structure of government evolved to meet the challenges of the times that we had at that time. A lot of things have been replaced and done away with. Thank goodness, one thing is that the mayor used to be, have to hold court for anybody who had traffic tickets and that sort of thing, and I'm just real glad I don't have to do that. City used to have a city physician, we no longer have the need for a city physician. And there were other things that we have tweaked through the years. And people ask me, "What type of government structure does the city of Crestview have?" And that's sort of hard for me to answer, because it's really a hybrid. You have different forms, you have a strong mayor, you have a strong council, city manager, you have other different things, and we're none of those. And starting here, we have three groups of elected officials for the city of Crestview. One, all the electors select a mayor, select five council members, and a city clerk. Now, the council members, we have them, they're elected every two years. Three are from the three different districts that we have in the city, the other two are at large. And so, the at-large candidates and the mayor are elected at the same time. And the clerk and the district council members run for election at that same time, too. And we have over here, under the mayor's responsibilities in the city of Crestview, somewhat different than a lot of other cities, the main responsibility of the mayor is to maintain public safety, to have order for the city. And underneath that, the mayor is responsible for the police department and the fire department. And I was, one of the reasons I was running a little bit late this evening, because I was taking care of fire department business, and I'm able to announce to you, for the first group I've announced to, that our new fire chief was hired this afternoon, and that is Tony Holland, who is the deputy chief now. And most people know, I'm very happy. His interview was fantastic, his vision for the city, for the fire department, the direction he wants to go, and a lot of things that I agree with, and it's just real exciting to see someone who started as a teenager in our fire department, and held every position in that fire department up until now 24 years later. Which makes him sort of young for a fire chief, but he knows the business. I questioned him today, of course, he could lose me quickly, about our protocol and of the update techniques that we have now, how different it is than when he started. And what I heard coming from him, that was so refreshing, was his passion for fire control, and his passion for getting into the schools even more, and teaching these youngsters what they need to do to protect themselves, and probably set, and his plans for certain classes that he's going to offer. And one I'm really excited about, he's, Fire Department's going to have to offer a baby city class for teenagers, teach them CPR, and the different things they would need to do, and I think, I told him, I said, "You're going to be overwhelmed, you're going to have more people than you think you can use," and that's a great fix. He said, "Don't get me started on that, I'm real happy today." But, and the police department, things that I'm responsible for, is if someone wants to close a city street, they have to come through the mayor's office, they have to have an application of dates, the event, and they have to have a map of where they want it closed, and for how long, and what type of police protection I would have to have there for them, or any kind of other, anything else, other than the public safety departments. If they want anything else, like porta-potties, or the help of public services, or anything like that, they go to the council and ask permission for that. So you can see, we have different areas of responsibility now. Sometimes that confuses people, when they come, "Oh, you've got to go to another department now, you've got to go in front of the council." But that's the hybrid form that we have right now. And also, when you want to close a street, you have to give evidence of, a certificate of evidence holding the city, that holding the city not liable for any damages may be done, or injuries to participants, and you have to, it's a million dollars. And so, that secures the city against any kind of damages may come its way. In the city council, there's a lot of departments under there, almost every other department. You have administrative assistant, who's Teresa Gaylor, who's here tonight, and under her, we have growth management, but we also have planning and zoning, and code enforcement come under that one umbrella there. Then we have public services, big department. Wayne Steele is head of public services, he's responsible for all city facilities, the buildings, the grounds, and roadways, everything has to be taken care of by his department. He's also in charge of all parks and recreation. So, you talk about a lot of responsibility for one person, his phone rings all the time, and he does a great job at it, too, comes under there now. And also, the library, just a few years ago, the library was made into a separate department, and we have one of the finest libraries in the area. The number of patrons that we have out distances almost every other library in the area, and they do a great job up there. The worst thing that we're looking at now, is the facility that was so great just a few years ago, is becoming too small. You go in there almost any time, the afternoon especially, Sandra's here from the library, and the place is packed out. We don't have enough computers for everybody, for the demand, is that, am I correct about that?
Well, computers actually, because now we have such Wi-Fi access, more people are bringing in their own individual ones.
That's right.
So, space is more concerned than actually the public computers, because they're bringing in their own devices, now that brings, it's, you know...
Let's not go there, I'm 70 years old. And the other area of government in Crestview in our current form, is under the city clerk, who's also elected to four-year terms. And under the city clerk, you have the finance department, takes care of paying all our bills, getting the paychecks out, and 500 other things that it has to take care of. Also, she serves as our HR department, and I'll let her talk, when she comes up, she can tell you a few other things they have to do. And also, utility billing. And it's not the mayor's office that you come and complain to about your water bill. I can't get that across to anybody, it's her problem. So I try to send them right back up to the hall there, but everything, it's only twice a month they complain, cutoff day. So, and that's after two months not paying the bill, so, nope, don't get me started. But, she takes care of that, as another independent part of the city government, which is somewhat different, for one of the few cities in the state that has an elected city clerk. The idea behind that was to have another independent section of city government. So, if you have any questions of me, anything I missed, he only gave me 15 minutes.
Would you, Mr. Mayor, talk about what dictates the type of government we have? Why do we have that? What document?
And you've only used eight minutes, sir.
Only, okay. Why do we have this form of government? You know, Mr. Whitton, I'm not really sure.
The document that dictates it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, we have a city charter. And we just like, the United States has to abide by the Constitution, that we have to abide by the charter that the voters selected many years ago, maybe it was in the 60s the last time it was changed. And, so, we have to abide by that charter, just like our national government is supposed to follow the Constitution. I understand that there's a certain group that are coming to see me soon, to ask my, what I'm going to do about illegal immigrants, if I'm going to cooperate with the federal government. I have my answer ready. I raised my hand to support the Constitution and government of the United States and the state of Florida, and I've said, "We will obey the Constitution." They're not going to like me for that, but then I'll send them to Tony Taylor, who's going to say the same thing. But the charter is what we're talking about tonight. Any changes that we do, for any options that we may present here, has to go in front of the voters to be voted upon. The history has not been real strong, it's been defeated every time it came up. And, felt that it was important that we get the message out to what we now have. Most people do not know what we have now, or what we may try to go at times, so we think we need to do a better job of educating the folks. I'm not going to be advocating for any one of the three, but I'm willing to work with any one of the three, that the voters would select. And I think most of our city officials would do the same. You ready, Bets?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I took off the kissing babies. This is not fair.
I didn't mention that, that I'm going to get to kiss babies.
Okay, so what happens if the city becomes a city manager council? What happens in that? Is underneath the council, we have a city manager. City manager runs all the departments, except, this is one of those iffy things, except for finance and utility billing, unless the charter also changes and puts those two departments, which are currently under the city clerk, under the city manager. So you're going to have options, if it goes to the voters, to say, "Do we want an elected city clerk, do we want those, all these departments?" There's going to be, if we ever get to this point, it will probably be a multiple choice. Do you want this, do you want this, do you want this? I'm the only elected city clerk in Okaloosa County, and a matter of fact, the only, I believe, since Jay is no longer elected, the only elected city clerk in the entire northwest Florida region. There's only 12 in the entire state of Florida, out of all the hundreds of cities. So, all the departments that are now, at this point, under the council and the mayor, would become under the mayor, under the city manager. The mayor would be kissing babies, and talking about illegal immigrants, so, maybe we'll move the water cutoff down to you, because you have anything else. And right now, without any changes, with the city charter change, and what's under the finance and utility billing? Utility billing is your water sewer and garbage. So one of the things, and Mayor Cato said, "Okay, what else do you do?" Finance includes, obviously, the city clerk's office, who is the custodian of public records. If you have any public records requests, it comes to the city clerk's office, okay? And then it gets distributed out to the different departments, and it comes back to me to distribute. Finance also includes risk management. All the insurance has to be accommodated, approved, established, bid on, through the city clerk's office. Just going down my office here. So we have risk management, we have payroll, all the payroll, all the personnel, all the applications that come into the city, go through the city clerk's office, and then get distributed. Somebody has an opening, they send it to the city clerk's office, we advertise it, or put it on the website, we get the applications, we send them out to the departments. And then, when the people are hired, department heads have full control over who they hire. But, the orientation for those people is done by the city clerk's office, by the HR department. FMLA rules, insurance rules, all those, anything to do with personnel is under the city clerk's office. You're right, there's about 50 things. And then, we have accounting, accounting assistant. You have a finance director and an assistant accounting, who is in charge of paying the bills, running the money, making sure it's balanced, making sure the bank accounts are held up, and all the money is in the correct place. There's an extreme amount of checks and balances, not one, any one person is in charge of getting the checks out. The accounts payable person processes the checks, somebody else stamps them, somebody else makes sure that the purchase orders are done correctly. Which is another thing, everything that's bought in the city is done on a purchase order, which goes to the finance office, which is underneath the city clerk, so, I think that's 51 now. And then, IT is under the city clerk. So there is a lot of responsibility in that position, and again, it is an elected position, and fortunately, I'm there for four years, yay. But, it would take a change in the charter to move those departments from out from under, because if you read the charter, the city clerk is in charge of all finances, which is, these are the two, this is where all the money comes from. The police department doesn't make any money. Spends a lot, doesn't make any. Fire department doesn't make any money. Spends a lot, doesn't make any. Growth management, except for the permitting part of growth management, doesn't make any money. The only place our money comes from is adware taxes, permits and fees, and the utility billing. That's where the money comes from. So, that's where all the money in the city flows through the city clerk's office, by way of the finance department. And then, in this happy time of year, we do the budget. Put it together, put out some preliminary numbers based on what we did last year, send it out to the department heads, they send back, "I want this," they send, "No, you can't have that, it's too much money," because we have to project what the revenues are going to be based on last year, and what the expenses are going to be based on last year, and of course, everybody wants everything they want, it's kind of like your kids, you know? "I'm sorry, you can't have that, we can't afford that this year." And under a strong mayor council, there is not a city manager. A strong mayor can appoint and should appoint a city administrator, who will be over, again, all of the departments, except for the ones that are under the city clerk. It's in the white, I'm sorry. And if you look at what, you know, the city budget, the municipal ordinances, legislative oversight, it's not shown on all these other boards for what the city council does, but these are their main responsibilities. They are responsible for passing the city budget, as it's presented by the city clerk at this point, and the department heads. Okay, they're responsible for passing municipal ordinances, or changing municipal ordinances upon the recommendations of the different departments. Legislative oversight, they are the legislative body of the city. They're not the managers of the city, they're the legislators for the city. So they do policy, they do, again, legislative oversight, budget oversight, and law oversight. City police department and the code enforcement uphold those ordinances. City clerk and finance does the budget and presidents of them, and then manages the budget through the departments, and watches over it. And that's, so that's, the only really difference between a strong mayor and a city manager, is you don't have that city manager level between the council and all the departments. You have the mayor with an administrator over all those city departments. That's the big difference, you don't have any. Your city manager is appointed by the city council, or hired by the city council. Under a strong mayor, your mayor appoints your city administrator, and he is, he, she, is directly reportable to the mayor, who can hire and fire at will. City manager is appointed by the city council, who can hire and fire with a two-thirds majority of the city council.
So, the question, before I go into where we could go with this, I'm not going to endorse a particular type of government, because we need to have workshops, public hearings, hearing from the people, but I will say this, that I will tell you that what we have right now is inefficient, in my opinion, okay? I wouldn't have said that a couple of years ago, before I was in office. I just kind of sat back there, and the city just ran, and I wasn't quite sure, ran, but seemed to be running, you know? But being in office, it doesn't seem like an efficient method of government. Let me share this with you. Of the 411 cities we have in the state of Florida, only 85 have a similar type of government to ours. Only 85 out of 411. Of those 85, 83 of them have populations less than 7,500 people. We have cities with, our newest city has five people in it, by the way. We have cities with 220 people, 624 people, 1,869 people, up to 7,610. And finally, when you get to Arcadia, excuse me, Sebring, they've got 10,000 people. Now here's Crestview, 23,000 people, shooting near 25,000 people. Same type of government all these other cities have, they have fewer than 7,500 people. In fact, when you look at, when we adopted this charter, that's exactly what we had. We had about 7,500 people back in the 1960s, and we haven't grown our government, along with our city. So, things that go very well with small governments, for instance, Laurel Hill, probably would have to change to a different type of government. They're very small electorate, small population, they can handle things very much like we're doing in Crestview. But here in Crestview, we've gotten so large, that we need to look at, at least, coming up with a change. But guess what, I don't get to make that decision. Keep in mind, with the city council, you've got five people, I'm only one-fifth of the city council, and you hire them part-time. Part-time city council, meet once a month by city charter. Actually, we meet a couple of times a month, because we have a workshop in there. So, the people that are making decisions on ordinances and day-to-day operations of at least three or four-year departments, only get together once a month to make those decisions. And we can't talk to each other in between, because we're violating the sunshine law. We get together and say, "Hey, what do you think you ought to do with this," or whatever, you know? So, where is the efficiency when, I just, I can't imagine, being a CEO of a company, having a company and saying, "Okay, I want you all to run my company for me, but don't talk to each other, except once a month." That company will go down the tubes in a heartbeat. And yet, we're operating like that. So, I'm not going to say what we should endorse, that'd come out from the people, but I would just tell you that I think we really have to look at what we have right now. Another statistic I'd like to bring out, and that is, we keep on saying we've tried this in the past, and we have, we've tried changing government, it has gone down. I've only been here since 2010, so I only, I only saw it go down defeat one time, and that was in 2012. Keep this in mind, we had a, we had a large voter turnout, because that was a presidential election, 2012. We had, at that time, 12,625 registered voters, we had 9,076 people show up to vote, 72%. Now, when we had been a municipal election, like we did 14th of March, 3.8%, that's an embarrassment, 3.8% of our voters decided who's going to be in the city council. So when people get on Facebook and they say, "Let's kick out the city council, let's get rid of all those old men, making a hundred thousand dollars a year," please don't listen to that figure. We get, we get enough to cover our travel costs, all we get. If people really want to do that, that is part of democracy. Go out and find people to run, show up at the voting booth and vote them in, that's all people have to do. Now, when we had 72% of our voters, and this was on the ballot the last time, people kept on sending, get defeated. Didn't get defeated that badly, and there were 3,795 people that were for it, for a 46.7% approval rate, and 4,319 people against it, with 53.23 disapproval rate. But also keep in mind, almost 1,000 people, 960 people didn't vote at all, because we were told ahead of time, it didn't come, it was no longer on the ballot. You remember, those of you that were here, it was a technicality, and even though it was written on the ballot, because it couldn't have been taken off, it didn't come. So almost 1,000 people said, "It doesn't count, I'm not going to waste my ink." And we don't know that 960 people actually could have swayed the vote the other way. So what I'm saying is that, to me, I think the key is going to be to get the voters down, and I'll get to that in just a minute. So, what needs to be done in order to look at a different form of government? First of all, I thought of this about a year ago, I was at a, one of my town hall meetings. It had nothing to do with the report card we got from Mason Dixon. People were asking me about the way city government runs, and I, and I said, "Well, I don't think we have an efficient form of government." Now, don't misunderstand that, I'm not saying that the city clerk's inefficient, or the mayor's inefficient, certainly not saying I'm inefficient. Our form of government, we've outgrown the form of government. So I decided at that time, I announced at that time, that one of my goals for the upcoming year, was to get involved in looking at our city government, that's why I'm having a town hall meeting tonight. What we're going to do, based on the report we got from Mason Dixon, and again, and if you want me to address it in Q and A afterwards, I will, rather not go into detail, but we got a rather bad report card, again, based on the fact that we have an inefficient government, not that we have bad people. But based on that, we are going to have a workshop, the city council, on 24th of April. Instead of being just a group of people talking to one city councilman, it'll be an opportunity for anybody in the city to come in front of the city council and say, "This is what we think of the present government." Not what we think of you, what we think of the present government, and what we would like to see changed, and we'd like to see any change. So keep that in mind, spread the word, the 24th of April, we really want to get people there. We've got plenty of time, we took a two-hour meeting today and stretched it out to four hours, so trust me, we have plenty of time. So we're going to have that on 24th of April. Based on that, input from you, the public, the city council that have to make a decision, are we going to form a committee to look at changing the former government, or there's no interest? I mean, if there's no interest from the public, if nobody shows up at meetings, if nobody has expressed dissatisfaction through emails and phone calls, or stuff like that, the message you might be sending is, "You're happy with the way we are, the way our government is." In which case, the council could say, "Well, we're not going to spend our, we're not going to waste our time in forming a committee." They had the option of forming a committee like they did back in 2010, 2011, or whenever it was, and that committee would come back to the city council, make a recommendation. "We believe that you should change your government to this form of government, or we believe you shouldn't change at all." Their goal will be, go out, talk to the people, talk amongst themselves, and come back with a recommendation. And let me tell you this, the last time they did that, there was a disconnect between the recommendation of the committee and the decision of the city council, and that probably contributed to confusion, confusion by the electorate. They're hearing one thing, the committee recommended that we go to an appointed city clerk. The city council said, "No, we don't want to do that, we want to keep as many people elected as possible, so we want to..." So they put it up this way. And so that caused confusion. So what we have to do, as a city council, once we have the committee come back to us and make a recommendation, and we take the recommendation, we have to educate the public. And I say that, I use the word educate, because I've heard people say, "We have to go out and market, market the plan." You say market, it almost has a connotation, we have to sell it to the people. And if it's worthy, we don't have to sell it to people, all we have to do is educate the people, "This is what we have, this is what we could go to," and that's it. No personal opinion, no bias, "We need to go because of this, or we don't need to go because of that, here's what we have, and here's what we can go to, and, you know, here's what things will look like, what they look like now, what they'll look like in the future," and then allow you, the voters, to make that decision. The other thing we probably need to do, and the mayor's brought this up on several occasions in front of the city council, and that is, if we look at making changes to our charter, which has to be done by the people, we have to do it in increments that people will read and understand on the ballot. If you just put a big old thing, the city charter, on the ballot, and highlights some changes, people probably are going to say, "Oh my God, I got time to read this, or I'm reading, I don't understand it." What you'd have to do is put down, like Fort Walton Beach, when they wanted to make some changes to the charter, "We want to change the charter from this to this," that's statement number one, yes and no. If we do that, then we need to change the charter, this and that, statement number two. Make it very discreet, so people can know exactly what they're voting on. The other thing that I believe we need to do, and this was a positive suggestion by Mason Dixon, and that is, we need to examine allowing Paul Lux, supervisor of elections, to allow voting, he doesn't have to allow it, to perform voting by mail. You can't do a completely mailed ballot for elected officials, but you can do it in a referendum, according to Paul Lux, and Paul's one of the smartest guys I've seen in county government, I mean, he just really knows his job, well-trained, wasn't he? But anyway, I think if we do that, we will get a higher percentage, probably, maybe not high, 72%, but my... But my belief is, and again, this is JB Witt's personal belief, if we can get 20 to 30 percent of our people, we will get a good cross-section of the young, the middle, and the old. Because if you continue to get 5 to 10 percent of your people, I can almost guarantee you, we're not going to change anything in the city. Because you know who votes to that 5 and 10 percent? Old people like me. Old people, we love to vote. I mean, they will always show up. And who doesn't like change? Old people. A lot of people don't like change. The older you get, the more you like the status quo. And so, we have got to break that barrier, get the voting up 20, 30, 40 percent, whatever it is. Get most people out and voting, and make sure they understand what they're voting for, and I think we could have some kind of a change. But again, nothing I can do until you people come and speak to us, the city council. And I'm taking input tonight, and I'm going to be quiet in just a minute, because my time's almost up. But I'm talking about the public hearings. The workshop on the 24th is the beginning stages. If we decide to form a committee, then there's a requirement to have public hearings. Public hearings are very important, again, for people to come and speak to the city council. There will be advertisements in the newspaper, WAAC radio, Crestview television. It has to be publicized everywhere. And again, when people call me and say, well, I would have come to the city council meeting because I didn't know what was on the agenda, and I say, well, it was in the newspaper, I'll read the newspaper. There has to be a certain amount of responsibility on our citizens to find out what's going on in the city. And so, if you're one of the ones, and you're probably not in this room, I almost guarantee everybody in this room goes up and reads our newspaper, listens to the radio station, watches the CCTV. Some of our younger generation like to rely on Facebook, on Twitter, and all those kinds, Instagram, all those other kinds of things. So, again, help me spread the word. If you don't want to do anything else, go to the city website. The city website has minutes and agendas of every city council meeting, every city council workshop, and then you'll know what's going on in the city and be able to come. Even if you don't call up the city clerk and get on the agenda, every single meeting we have, we open up the floor to public comment. People get confused sometimes because we have two public comments. One is, we ask you if you want to comment on anything that's on the agenda. And so, you can't come up and talk about the price tickets at Disney World if that's not on the agenda. But at the very end of the meeting, we have public comments, you can come up and talk to us about anything. Now, with that, saying that, I'm going to be quiet and take comments and questions from the audience. And please, if you need a microphone, I'll bring you one, but if you don't, you might just maybe want to stand up so you project a little bit more. Because I know it's frustrating to me to hear an answer to a question, not to know what the question was. So, please make sure we can hear the question. All right, we'll start down.
Yes, there's one question that I get quite a bit, and I'm not into how the city works. But the one question is, I live across the street from you, and I'm in the county, but I use all the facilities. Why can't I vote? What would be needed to change that?
You can give us a seat.
Got it, Sid.
And I think, Pat, you have a better answer than I would, but there are state statutes that require where you have to be in order to vote. So, we can't tell you that if you're living in the county, you can vote in a city election. We couldn't do that. We'd be violating the state statute. But that's not the only issue. It's not just people living in, there are people who have a business, okay, in the city, but they live in the county, and they don't have any say who gets elected. I've had business owners say, well, you affect my business, but I can't vote on you. And all I can tell them is that, yes, you can, you just have to move into the city. And I'm sorry, but that's the only way, certain way you can vote in a city election. Or, if you can figure out how to annex your property to the city, you bring it to us, and we'll do it. Yes?
Mr. Wick, Andrew Rentsch.
Would you stand up, Andrew, so everybody can hear you, please?
Question. Historically speaking, how long did the last time the charter was attempted to change, how long from start to finish did that process take before it actually got onto a ballot that voters could vote on?
If I, and I've read it someplace, and I'm sure the mayor can be, I think it was a two-year process, but the committee was down for two years, which is unbelievable, huh?
It was around two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I covered it. The charter meetings were over a year and a half.
Traditionally, it's been two years process, because unfortunately, many committees that are made up, or commissions that are made up of people who want to work on the charter, 50 percent of them are for something, and the other 50 percent are against, and they settle, we can find consensus, which is one of the main problems in the last Crestview charter. And having it the full document is a total waste of time on it. I think the reason it didn't count was because they didn't have the proper advertisement for people to vote. But two years is about the length of time, because the commission takes a long enough time, because there are public hearings, there's processes you have to follow, and how to form a committee, and how the committee operates, and then how the committee presents their results. So, they all have to do with public advertising and public record. So, the fact is, that's why it takes time. From the time to the election, because...
I hear you, Pat, but I got to tell you, I would not be that patient.
That's maximum. That's maximum.
Now, the other thing, JB, is...
We can't reinvent the wheel. We've been doing this too many, we need to take what we have, tweak it.
Problem is, most commission, the parts that started, there's no proper facilitation of the commission. So, when nobody's in charge that knows how to focus the group and facilitate the process, it's just like flailing in the water where you're drowning.
That's a great point. I'm already examining that. I've already talked to people that could facilitate, and that would move the process along. But that's a great point.
A point, under state and federal law, too. If the charter changes the way somebody's job is, but who's already in office, that change doesn't go into effect until after their term ends, right?
You wouldn't actually see the change until next year.
Yeah, so if you change the city clerk, if you're, a year from now, that could not go into effect until after that term ends.
If you had the warm fuzz, you'd know you were making progress.
Yes, you're right, yeah. Go ahead.
This gentleman here had a question. Yes?
You mentioned there's 23,000 to 25,000 people in the Crestview area.
Could you speak up just a little bit, sir?
Yeah, absolutely. So, of the 23,000 to 25,000 people who represent Crestview and vote, regarding her question about the city limits, how many people, how many of those voters live in city limits and can vote on city decisions versus people who live in the county and have no say?
There are just right around 13,000 registered voters in the city of Crestview.
Okay, so 13,000 out of 25,000.
Right.
You've got the kids under 18, don't vote. The ones under 18 can't vote yet.
Or not, for, either they're children, or for some reason, they're not allowed to vote, like sellers.
Can I call you, Bob?
I checked with Paul Lux's office, a few minutes later, a couple hours ago. There are 14,007 voters qualified to vote in the March election.
How many have gone up?
My concern was that we elected one of the city council members at 2.3 percent of the total available votes. Paul's really sensitive to the fact, he said, well, they didn't vote. Well, you can't say we didn't count them. They didn't vote. I often think about changing the city council charter, so that we can call this happen. Because in the last election, only 1 percent of the potential voters in the city actually voted. That's one of the primary concerns, that if you didn't vote, you're crazy. Now, I voted for the guy who thinks God told him to do that. My God's bigger than 2.3 percent. So, I think you just, we need to get out there and do something and vote. Because if we're voting as citizens, we're going to be able to get more people running for office. We cannot sit here and be apathetic about it.
Bob, just so you sit down, I agree with you, we're apathetic, but I'm not, I'm a little foggy how you came up with 2.3 out of 3.8 that Paul advertised.
What I did is took the number of voters, 337 actually voted for Mr. Blocker.
So, you didn't count 199 that voted for his opponent?
I didn't count that. But I figured, I figured that if I counted his, the other, his opponent, and added those two numbers together, it'd come around 550. If I divide 14, 7, by the end of the, see what the percentage is? It's a little over 1 percent of the votes that were actually made for potential voters. That's amazing, though. I'll show you the graph.
I see what you're saying. You just said, that percentage of ones that actually elected that particular councilman. I get it, all right. One question, Jessa.
Kind of bouncing off his point, I agree, low voter turnout, and I'll be honest, I did not vote. But the reason I did not vote is I did not know that they were holding an election. So, what way can we go about to increase publicity of public elections? Because for the presidential election, I received a bunch of sample ballots and stuff from Paul Lux's office in my mailbox. I can honestly say, and I check my mail every day, I didn't receive one thing about a Crestview city election.
Well, I did.
I did.
They were sent out, right?
Recent.
I'm not sure, so I'm not sure why you didn't get it, but everybody I know got a sample ballot.
Do you live within the city limits?
Yes, ma'am.
No, they don't do that, but they send a sample ballot.
But not if people have city limits.
You've already slighted, you're only getting...
I've got a question. When it comes to...
Yes, sir, would you stand up, please, so we all hear you?
When it comes to the city limits, could we define those as...
Should have been at the last council meeting. It's nothing, it's nothing you said, it is so, this city's so convoluted, and that is...
Right.
When I was running for office, I walked into Jesse's shop, you know where Precision Auto is?
Yes.
I walked in and said, Jesse, how's it going? You know, I'm running for office. He said, JB, don't waste your breath, I'm in county property. I said, wait a minute, oh, just next door, and they're in the city. He said, I know. Right now, if our chief of police walks out, his chief walks out of his back door and goes into the back of SEFCO, he's on county property. Now, if he's silly enough to walk into the middle of State Road 85, he's on state property, right? He goes across the street, goes beyond Tom, Tommy, back on city property. That's the kind of situation we have. So, you say to me, how did it happen? I don't know how it happened. How do we fix it? We don't know how to fix it either, because you cannot involuntarily annex someone into the city. You can ask them to come in. You can bribe them to come in by saying, we'll give you water and sewage if you come in, and if you don't, well, I don't know, are we going to cut off the sewer? But anyway, it's a great question. And I remember this when I first joined the city council. I remember the mayor saying to me, that when he became mayor, the chief drove around town, and he had no idea that belongs, that's part of the county, and this is the county. Imagine, imagine our police and our fire responding. They get a call, well, they're supposed to meet, it's supposed to be the sheriff. It's supposed to be me, it's supposed to be the Oklahoma Fire Department, you know? So, we have a problem. We're fragmented as a city. I don't know how it happened, it happened many, many years ago.
We're not the only one.
No, no, we're not.
And actually, I've had a lot of police officers, we had to try to train them, the new ones. It's what our limits are, and I still couldn't tell exactly where they are myself, I've been there for a while now. But we've lost some cases because a young rookie or something will write a speeding ticket, which is valid speeding ticket, but he may be two or three feet over, you know, into the county, and people have fought it, and they win, rightfully so. I had a young man down on, I can't remember the street now, but one part of the, it's a four-way intersection, and one side where he was, his park was city, and the other side was county, and he went, when the guy ran the stop sign, he followed him going into county property, and, but he didn't, he didn't start the patrol until he had gotten, crossed over the line, so that ticket was invalid. So, it's a problem. Trying to train these police officers where their authority lies is pretty tough, because I couldn't tell them.
And this is just funny, and it's really sad. I was talking to one of the police officers in town about a year ago, and he says, you know, the orders are so bad that when we get a call, we have to go look at the garbage can, and it might not be starting to rest.
Ms. Betty, I know we just brought our internet website up to date in the modern age. Does the city also have, I know I've seen the Facebook, is that a potential messaging center for those younger voters, which we lack at election time?
I mean, we can, we try to keep our Facebook and that apolitical, you know? We can't, obviously can't endorse any candidates. But, I mean, we go back to the newspaper, and we usually advertise everything that we can advertise on there, but, and people say they don't read the newspaper, but the newspaper...
State statute requires it.
Yeah, the newspaper is on Facebook. And the Facebook, the articles in the paper interviewing the candidates was on Facebook. So, if you don't want to get the paper, sorry, Mark. That's fine, but you need to like the Bulletin and WAAC and Daily News on your Facebook, and you will get those articles that way.
You think the young millennials are going to do that?
Well, that's...
Ava, would you stand with us?
Now, saying that, just like we went back to Facebook, you can boost pages to put them on top of Facebook. I mean, is that something the city could do to, so that it does pop at the top saying, hey, we're voting on Tuesday, or on that type? I mean, because that's how most of the millennials are going to play.
That would be using taxpayers' funds, and I'm not sure that that would change that. Because it costs to do that, you can't do that.
Correct. I mean, it just gets more people out to vote on that.
Yes, sir, you had a question.
Yeah, on the Facebook, I for one, one of the old guys, I am into the technology, I do not get the newspapers, they're not worth the money. There's too much ad ink and not enough news ink. So, I for one, that's where I'm at. I can't see spend the money. Like you said, there's stuff, the paper's on the web, but it's not, the free version doesn't give you everything. So, you got to get the word out to people to remind them when the elections are, what's on the ballot. I for one, did get a sample ballot from Supervisor of Elections. Anyone who's registered to vote, you know, it's in the area, like in this case, I mean, in the city limits, they should have gotten a sample ballot. Other, email. I don't know what, how to set it up, I could find out, but your IT department, is there a way to do a mass emailing to send people? Are you shaking your head, no? I have to ask, and I don't mean to be rude. Is this because we don't want to take the time to look into it, or do we not want to change and move into the 21st century?
The election, well, it is, because emails are now not public records.
Yes, they are.
Well, you cannot get them to do advertisements for elections. And let me, personal experience, if you start sending out emails to all the registered voters in the city of Crestview, you will be cussed out online.
How about agenda items for the council, telling us what's on the ballot?
On our website, there is...
When I look at the website, I just looked this afternoon on agendas, the only thing posted was the previous feed. There was nothing for anything upcoming.
Well, it's because they're not done yet.
If you sign up for, not to interrupt, but if you sign up for the actual alerts, you will get inundated with text messages, and so you don't want...
There is a way to do it, but we don't put the agendas on there until the agendas are done. We can't, we put some future meetings on there, but we can't put agendas until the agendas are ready to go out.
Any other comments or questions, Jessa, back to you?
Is there any way to get a copy or to review the presentation by Mason Dixon?
He looking for a copy of the presentation by Mason Dixon?
I've got it, I can email it to you. Just email me at cityclerk@cityofcrestview.org.
Just go on, email and ask for a copy of it. But keep this, keep this in mind, too, is that, because I have, I have a copy of that also. And the written presentation and the oral presentation were a little bit different. So, just keep that in mind.
Understood.
Just keep that in mind. April.
Question.
Yes.
On some of those items, like the Mason Dixon information, the other thing, the retail strategies that we just got, can they not be placed on the city website with a link to a PDF?
I don't know that we even have, that we have a PDF copy of that.
But those strategies, no, you'd have to scan it.
She's already got it.
But you can make a PDF and put a link on it, correct? Or from the CRA site? Or link back to that? I mean, that, that way, you're, you're able in our city, you know, what I feel, I'm a business owner, so I don't get a vote either, I'm on Main Street, I don't get a vote in what they're doing, but I do, and I am active in board city council meetings, CRA meetings, all those things, because it could have an impact on my business, although I live in the county, right out, right on the pathway of the city limits. But if there were a way that people could actually access all this information that keeps going back and forth, and, you know, via a link, if we have a city website, we should be able to put any PDF on there that's of public knowledge, or was presented at a public meeting, where there were public funds spent on it. It's just, I'm just not seeing.
If we- My answer today is-
Add a link to a video, because there seems to always be a news agency, either CCC TV that is doing a video armament, or Cal is usually doing a video. Should that be on the city website?
I would love to have streaming, streaming city, and I've worked on that, probably it's gonna happen real soon, but I'm writing that down, because if we had the PDF copy, yeah, there's no reason why we couldn't put a link to that, but-
It just needs to be scanned, the copy's ready to help the city council members.
Okay. But if it's on the CRA, see, we're just saying it's on the CRA website, but average person doesn't know the difference between the city council and CRA.
If you go to the city's website and go under CRA, there's a link to the CRA website.
Understand that, but they won't know how to get there. I think you'd have to put down the CRA presentation available on-
I know it's CRA, but there should be a reason, an information sharing area on the city website. It's an information sharing website, correct? This was what happened in our city, why couldn't you have a link?
Yes?
Actually, I have a couple of things, just about the, as far as letting people know.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Yeah, I did receive a sample ballot, and I think when I drove by during the week, I saw one of the little signs saying that there was a vote going on, I think it had the dates. And again, not sure if this can officially be done or not, but we do have some city property that, you know, where we could have potentially, you know, a, a sign of some kind where it's got more public, like the intersection of 85, 90, or Main Street right there. If we're able to utilize that space to put additional signs up, or, I know we've used in the past, some of the other cities where I've been in, we used the schools, we've gone and talked to the schools and said, "Hey, would you mind if, you know, we put up that there is an election going on, you know, where the Bulldogs have their thing right at the corner there?" Again, we used to do it at the high schools themselves, the middle schools, where we'll ask permission from the principal to put something up, saying, you know, "There's an election," just what the date is, when they can, when they can vote, and what it is, you know, city council vote this date to this date. So, it, it kind of reminds me of a, a scenario with a roofer that I was dealing with, and so everybody probably wants a good roof on their house, and I had him make a comment basically saying, "I called the manufacturer, and I called the city, asking what the absolute minimum was that I had to do when installing this roof." It's like, "Yeah, the absolute minimum that we have to do is put it in the paper." But is that really what you want to hear? You know, someone putting your roof on your house, do you really want to know that they did the absolute bare minimum just to make sure it just barely passes? You know, so these things are important to the city, I think a lot of the younger crowd just simply didn't know. There's a lot of older population that's never gonna get on Facebook. I mean, you do need to use the newspaper, things like that. But I think there's a better way, if we just get a little creative, like I said, using some of those public arenas, I mean, there could be free ways to do it, you know? Come ask me, I'll give you one of my commercial posts, I don't care, you know? So that was one thing, I think we just need to do a better job of maybe getting a little bit more creative, how we can take advantage of space that we already own. Another thing that I did want to bring up is, with, mentioned to the city website, there's quite a, a lot of incorrect or confusing maybe, I'm not sure if you guys know or not, I just did a quick review. There are two different org charts of the city council, or, or of the city, I guess. One is found under the budget manual for 1617, and the other one is actually underneath the city council's tab, so there's actually two separate organizational charts. The one that I'm assuming is obviously most current is under the fiscal year, and it's actually incorrect, it shows that the city clerk is actually a hierarchical over the mayor and the city council, it's not actually done correctly. There's some, some, I tried pulling up some financial information, and there's a section where you can go in, and it shows, you know, budget reports, audit, financial, and it says monthly fis, monthly financial reports. And so I clicked on it, and it looks like for about a year and a half, maybe two years roughly, we were posting monthly reports, and I don't know if that was mandated for some reason, or, or whatever, but the problem is, you go in and you're thinking, "Oh, I can go see a monthly report." Does anybody know what the last date, the last monthly report was posted? It was April 2014. And again, I'm not saying that you technically have to, but what it does is, for someone who isn't at these city council meetings constantly, or, you know, again, you're just gonna click on, "Let's just see what's going on," right? "I'm, I'm finally interested." You get online, and it says, "Well, what have you all been doing for the last three years? Where's the reports?" And they're, they may not know, well, it's not mandated that we do that. That's fine, but it gives an expectation that at one point in time we did. Our city, you know, regardless of what format we go to, I think we need to do some housekeeping, you know, cleaning things up, making sure things are labeled correctly, there's not dual versions. One of my biggest concerns is the workload that is assigned, so even, you know, Betsy, you had talked about, if you look, the two pieces that you have that are under your charter responsibilities, but you're getting HR, you're getting IT, you know, that's not, I, I mean, I'm assuming all positions are part-time, but nobody really does part-time, that's one of those things. But, you know, an HR department, I've actually spoken at length with a national firm that does HR and payroll, and kind of explained the scenario, just to say, you know, what is our potential risk, right? And they were, they were not unfamiliar with something like this, they said it is very high risk to have your HR not being a, not an outside entity, but sort of a, you know, if HR falls under your city clerk, but she has duties that regarding finance, and, you know, anything budget-related, or regardless of who it fell under, it kind of makes things look a little questionable of what happens if this happens. It, it can put you at risk. And one of the things, and I actually heard that HR company say that word, so one of the things I would like to know is, I was at that meeting for the Mason Dixon, or, you know, when they came and did the report. And I would just like to know, so he was very, you know, aggressive, okay, with his concern, but one of my, my big questions is, he specifically said there were, there was risk to the city, potential risk. From what I've reviewed, I actually agree with it. I did have a very well, well-established professional take a look at some finance things, and I won't actually say what they are specifically, but when I went through it, I had him review it, and just to give you an idea of what his background was, so you don't think he's an idiot, 36 years in the federal government, auditor, systems accountant, budget analyst, financial management analyst, auditor with the IRS, international taxes, overseas assignments, US representative, I mean, just, it goes on and on and on. Financial management analyst performing strategic planning at the Federal Aviation Administration, I mean, it just goes on and on. I had him review a couple things, and, you know, yeah, I don't know, but hopefully there's documentation there. But, my big question is, you were told there was risk, I want to know, for every single department head that was there at that meeting, for every single councilman, mayor, city clerk, did any of you call him and ask specifically, what is that risk, so I can then call professionals in that field and say, "Are we at risk, yes or no?" Until we do decide on what our city government is going to change to, or if it won't, how do we address that so we don't lose taxpayer dollars on frivolous losses that we could otherwise potentially stop? That's what I really am looking for. I personally, with some of the information that I've gathered just in the last couple weeks, there are some scenarios that I have watched the city do, whether it be from the CRN council as it goes up to the city. There's a specific example right now that I can think of that puts the city at very great risk. You've had three professionals within general contracting, if you will, that have told you that there's a building that is unsafe. You had the opportunity to purchase it, regardless of price, to, to do something with it, and you chose not to. And right now, I know we're working on ordinances, however, just getting a definition took five months, okay? So at that current rate, knowing that we need probably two to three more minimum steps, we're looking at almost two years before that building comes down, and that's if he doesn't bite you on it. So, if you have a building, and within those reports, they actually specifically notated an example where a building similar condition fell over on top of another building and killed all the people in it. So you had a chance where you could have actually bought one of the cheapest buildings, even with the cost of teardown, and you've walked away from it, and you've been told by three different experts in the field that it is a dangerous building. That, to me, is risk. So, if something happens to the people in Coney Island, is it really worth 60 grand to lose people sitting in the Coney Island? And it may not happen, it may not, but that, to me, shows risk. We're, we're too worried about, you know, "Oh, maybe somebody will make 10 grand on a piece of crap property." Who cares? I mean, it's a dangerous building. We've been told by those professionals that it is. It should come down. The richest person, we're gonna have a multimillionaire one day. You know Ms. Helen, who's on the streets, sitting underneath a lot of these buildings? One day, God forbid, something's gonna fall on her, and she will be the richest woman in Crestview. I mean, so, I really hope that there's some serious look at, regardless of what we change to, even if we don't change, this, as you said, is not efficient, it's not working, but in the meantime, if it's a year from now, what have you, I think there are some things that do need to be addressed, and we've got to figure out how to start fixing them more efficiently, so, all right.
Yeah, thank you for your personal opinion. Yes?
Getting back to the subject of tonight's meeting, of the different kinds of city government. I've had a few years' experience with this, multiple cities in this county in particular. And I'd like to give you just a little story that is really relevant. Several years ago, I had an eye problem. I don't even remember what it was, I was seeing spots or something, but he said, "You have to see a retina specialist right away." So they called the University of West Florida, and they told me, they said, "Well, send her over and somebody will see her." So I went over to the retina specialist. What I didn't know is there were three different doctors in that retina specialist area, and they dealt with three different parts of the retina. So there's an example of specialization. If you know any attorneys, you know, you can't go to a tax attorney for divorce, there are lawyers that specialize in every single branch, the same with medicine, the same with any profession. And public administration is the very same thing. Thanks to the millions of laws and regulations, laws passed by legislators and regulations passed by bureaucrats, which are not law, just regulations which can be challenged much more easily than most people realize, that everything that we do is touched by all these laws and regulations. And the only way to deal with it, in municipal government or county government, is to have a specialist in the public administration that deals with municipalities. Because today's world of government, like JB said, when he was running for office, was on the outside, saw some things he'd like to participate in, he had no idea what city government was like. And while I can't disagree with what Melissa said, I do know, from working for the past 18 years inside City Hall, strictly as a volunteer, but one who loves Crestview, even though I live someplace else, and you only vote in the place where you sleep. The fact of the matter is, that there is nobody that's done anything intentionally wrong. It's, they inherited what was from a very small community, that there was very little municipal knowledge at the time required by the state of Florida. Now the state of Florida has sections of law on municipal government that they must follow, the city clerk especially, elected city clerk. The fact is, is that right now, as we sit here, the legislature is hard at work, I manage legislative for the Institute for Senior Professionals, and have to follow this nightmare of Tallahassee. And the thing is, they are now using Salami tactics on home rule, which is what municipal government is based on. And that's part of the Florida constitution, allowing cities to have their own type of government, which does not violate other state or federal laws. But they are now reducing the ability, there are 10 particular bills, they're cutting away at home rule of municipalities and counties, while they are further away, the further away your government gets from you, the less they have respect for the local situation. So one thing that's important is, is the way JB is approaching it, and the mayor as well, and Betsy, is to show you that there are choices, that they have to be informed choices. But the fact is, is that, I actually have to speak on what was spoken about voting. I did everything except knock on every single door in the county to tell people there was an election for 20 years. And if there is no interest in the candidates or the issues, I put on, and now Paul is doing it, putting on, perfect elections, everything in place, as accommodating as possible. The fact is, is that unless it's exciting candidate race or an issue race, that's the only thing that drives people to polls. And I think one of the words that JB used was responsibility, and it is the individual's responsibility to go and learn about their city government at whatever meeting you can. Election laws are now governed a great deal by the federal government, and when the first big change was noted in, after the 2000 elections in the HAVA bill, the Help America Vote Act, we had directions from the federal government saying that all of our voting information had to be written in no higher than sixth grade level of English, or the multiple other foreign languages that some people are required to print. Well, a few years later, in 2008, 2009, there was another bill, the MOOD bill, the Military Overseas and Voter Enhancement Act, that again required the feds to tell us what to write our voting information in, and we were told not to write it anything higher than the fourth grade level. So, that's kind of information that we had to put out, that was there. As far as the newspapers are concerned, the state law requires newspapers. When they catch up and say that you can just advertise on Facebook or anything else, then that's what election officials will do. But until then, they still have to advertise in the newspapers, and they are allowed, according to the funding that's given to them, which is the redheaded stepchild of every budget process. The fact is, they really can't afford to do much more. Sample ballots, at the last time I ever mailed them, it cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, taxpayer money. So, I think we all have to have some act- So, uh, I think we all have to have some act of honor to find out, because the information is there. And again, I applaud the way the city, this is the best city council that I've ever worked with in the last 25, 30 years, and I applaud the way they've approached everything. Congratulations. I was working with the county commissioners since the 1970s, and when I was elected, I really learned what a county's like without a county manager. And despite some people saying, "We have an election and we voted three times," not to have a county manager, somebody made that up, and it became truth. Because I went back and I never found anything but one straw ballot, which means that it's non-binding, and it was about 48 to 51. And so, there never was. But I was the supervisor of elections for 20 years, so, and Paul worked for me for 10 rows.
Any more questions, comments? Yes?
Is not, I don't live in City Limits, but is...
Could you stand up, Sam? Everybody can hear you.
Is notification of city elections on the utility bills, do they, is that printed on utility bills, so they know about upcoming elections? Everybody gets a water bill, so, maybe they could put upcoming elections...
I think that would be an inexpensive way to do that.
If there's a memo...
But keeping, but keeping in mind, we're talking about elections in general.
Right.
In this particular referendum I'm talking about, we have suggested we would mail, personally mail in every home, which would negate the need to have, have it classed on all the city would have.
Or some council, a council election, I can say.
But, elections in general, I think a reminder in the water bill would cause something, but not a great amount. It's a good suggestion.
But you have to remember that not everybody gets water bills to vote.
Right, that's true.
Because it goes to all, you have 7,500 residential, 2,800 commercial, who may or may not live in the city. You have out of city, which is 400 people, who do not vote in the city. So, you're gonna get to a lot of people who don't do it. Can we do it? Yeah, as long as the council approves it, because most of the things that go out in the water bills are city information, water quality, or they are paid for by the nonprofit who wishes to have them.
Uh, what are the comment? I so totally agree with your comment. Oh, say. I so totally agree with Pat's discourse on personal responsibility, because the library being the early, an early voting site, not for city elections, we can tell you story after story, like, like the gentleman who comes in and we have to say, "I'm sorry, sir, not only have you missed early voting, you missed the entire election."
Comments, questions? JB, I'm...
Yes, sir. Way back.
Yes, um, as far as the whole process that we're trying to implement, what's the timeframe? Cause I, I think I missed it, I don't know if you guys are, put this out?
Yeah. Yes, sir. What we talked about is, uh, this will be brought up in a workshop, the city council on the 24th of April. Uh, that's when we'll start taking input from the public, and then we would have to make a decision after that. So that, that'll be the first step, 24th of April, public workshop.
That decision-making process, how does that go for, so, the, let's assume everybody plus here, plus some, show up at this workshop on the 24th.
Right.
What, what is the determining factor for whether you guys decide to change, or entertain the idea for a change?
Well...
How do you measure that?
If you, well, if, if you come into the meeting, it's gonna be considered, that's for sure, cause you're gonna have an opportunity to present it. Now, in any vote, the city council, magic number's three, you've gotta get three votes out of five. So, um, that's, that's all I can tell you, is that, uh, the best thing you can do, if you want change, is you can contact your city councilman before, during, after meetings, anytime. Phone numbers are on the, on the website, emails are on the website, um, some have, I don't know, I have a Facebook page, I have one, my own personal one, I have one as councilman. Give them your, your input, uh, help to get the vote. But, but regardless, it has to be, can't be a tie vote, if you only have, if you have one person missing, you have four councilmen, you had two to two, it wouldn't, it wouldn't go, it'd stop right there. And the first step would be, is the city council going to appoint a commission committee to look at changing government? That'll be the first decision the city council makes, and you have to get three votes to do that.
So, the goal of the April 25th, I, I think you did, so the goal of the April 24th meeting is to show up and convince three out of five of y'all that we need a change?
That's excellent, absolutely right. Give input to the city council, we believe that we need a change in the city, and then, and you don't have to tell them what the change has to be, because they're gonna vote to have a committee in office to determine whether that change will pass. Again...
Yes, sir, real quick, what time on the 24th is that?
And locate...
5:00 or 6:00, City Hall.
Have we checked that yet?
In the rules and regulations, it says 5:30. It's either 5:30 or 6:00. No, no earlier than 5:30.
No earlier, between 5:30 and 6:00, and it'll be posted.
Right there.
Mr. Witt, if a vote is taken, and it is to proceed with committee, can you speak on the way in which that process will continue beyond that?
It would be difficult for me, because I didn't go through it the last time, and, and Pat said, you know, there was a lot of dissension within the committee. That's why it took so long. But I think if we approach it the right way, and again, I can't determine that, I'm one fifth vote, but I'm inclined to believe that we need to hire a professional facilitator to push the process along. Someone who's able to be able to control meetings, keep everything under, you know, keep emotion out of it, and, and the other thing I think you have to be careful of is that, is I think we, as city councilmen, need to be, uh, acutely aware of who we put on that commission, or committee. If we just go out and find our friend down the street that thinks the same way we do, because we want to vote a certain way, I think we're being remiss in our duties. I think we just need to go out, find people who are, we see them at city council meetings, they're interested in our government, uh, and they want to be involved, those are the kind of people I'd like to see. Again, it'll be my, it'll be my one-fifth selection. So, so to answer your question, I can't predict how long it's gonna take, but if it took, if it took two years, uh, I, I would be unhappy, I'd be distressed. I'd probably be freaking out about that.
What happened, I think, JB, I think the American backed me up. Last time, each council member named a person, and the mayor and the clerk each named a person, it was a seven-member...
Seven-member committee.
Seven-member charter committee, uh, former mayor Milligan, I believe, was the chair at that, and there were other citizens, so each person did, and then they went on and on, and it was the proverbial making of sausage. Sorry, but it was.
I was just gonna let you know that the committee actually run for a year, and then it went through a year with the, with the council. But, uh, we do possess the meeting minutes for most of that, and, uh, we have a lot of those documents there.
I've looked at the booklet, on the whole process, but can you tell me why it took the council a year? I understand you have public notices, that kind of stuff, that shouldn't take a year.
Yeah, well, from what I've reviewed in it, they were, they discussed particular items several times, so, but in the end, they did have a fairly good document. So it may be something that might want to be reviewed as, uh, as a base, as to start with that.
That's exactly what I'm saying, I think if we start tearing the whole charter apart, we are gonna take two years.
But if we start where they have, where they ended, which seemed to be a fairly good document, uh, maybe something that y'all want to review before the workshop.
I reviewed it, it was, almost two, about two years ago, so...
Ms. Reese, is that document part of the record by chance?
Is it?
Public record?
Public record? Uh, I would assume it would be, it's, it's, there's, I'm not sure it's on the website, though.
It would have to be, it's too old.
Guys, uh, I just, I just have pulled all of the...
There's a copy of mine, there's a copy booked on my office.
Is there?
I read a couple of years ago.
Okay. Well, you, it may be more, I just pieced it, built it together whenever we were looking for some records.
Well, I'm not sure it had all the minutes, I'm not sure it had all the minutes, but it had the whole process.
Okay. Well, we can put together a booklet, so that it would be available for the public to review.
That'd be something that'd be very interesting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, please.
If you, uh, we do...
Could you stand up, please, thank you.
So, if, if they do move forward, and we have, like, a committee, that does happen, is there a, um, certain requirement for that committee, or is it just, you know, each individual pulls at random?
I believe, I believe each, like the mayor said, each council member will select the person of their own choice, and then, was it the mayor and the city clerk?
Yes.
They have to be a voter.
The question I have, and...
Cause I have another piece to that, too.
Well, the other piece might be what I was gonna say, is, are there committee meetings public?
Yes.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, absolutely, yeah.
One of the things I would want to know is, um, for example, like, if 70% of the population is under the age of 50, can we say, you know, if there's seven committee members, you know, can we have at least, you know, three of them, four of them, you know, under the age of 50? Can we do things like that? So we're representing the population, does that make sense?
I'm not, I'm not sure we have to dictate that, but, again, like I told you...
So you're accurately representing the population, that's...
Get to your city councilman, tell them what you'd ask.
No, but I mean, you have certain positions, you have to have so many males, so many females, so many individuals, you know, under a certain age, so you're representing your actual makeup. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Within your registered voters, yeah.
It's just registered voters.
They pick by age.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying. But, but this is, again, so people aren't just randomly selected because, you know, it's just somebody who, who happened to say they wanted to do it first, you know what I mean? First person that calls you, what's the, what's the, how are you guys gonna pick who that person's gonna be? What's it based on? That's what I'm worried about.
Each council person picked who they wanted.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, during the last, uh, committee, was, was that committee bound by sunshine law, or were they actually...
Yes.
Any, any committee of the city, the only time anything is not by sunshine, if it's an executive, uh, committee meeting, or executive session, with the city council to vote on litigation. Every city council meeting, every committee meeting, every main street meeting, everything is open, is, has to be advertised and has to be open.
And as that, with that, uh, violations go, because the mayor does not have a vote, he can meet with every council member and discuss privately different things, because he doesn't have a vote, so he's not colluding with a council member to vote, maybe pushing his ideas, but, uh, since I really haven't had that, had a great work, this is a great council, I, I agree with what you say over there, Pat, they've been very easy to work with, uh, and very, uh, very attentive to the different problems that come before them, so I've enjoyed going into the room for change.
I didn't, I didn't pay him to say that.
Yes, you did. That's when we were colluding backstage.
Any other questions, Chris?
JB, I'm, I'm gonna give you a challenge. Paul Lux can give you a list for the last several city elections, alphabetically of all the people who voted. And I'm gonna relate back to an experience as a young newsman in the 60s, when, with the city council I would cover, the mayor was here, radio guy here, newspaper, and then the alderman and the city clerk, that one around a big square table. When people came in to talk about any topic from the public, he would first of all say, "Your name? Yes, ma'am? Uh, looks here, ma'am, that you have not voted the last three city elections. Thank you for coming to our meeting, we want you to stay and learn, and after the next time you vote, we'll come back to talk." And he would, and if they were voted, they got to talk. Cause you also get people coming to city council meetings who don't even live in the city, but they have not voted. That was his rule, anyway.
Any other comments, questions? Yes?
I have a question, is this committee that we're talking about already established? I'm, I'm getting a little confused between the CRA, the committee charter, and also the council. Is this already established, the committee that we're talking about, that they're appointing people to?
No.
Okay, is that gonna come out of the change in government and the choice that the council has?
Yeah, at, at the workshop, in April, okay, the council should have enough information to then come back, and they can't make a decision at a workshop, you can't, can't have motions and votes or stuff like that. They come back at the very next meeting and say, "Based on the information we got at the public hearing of our workshop, we decided we want to do this." And then we remove all.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, apologies for being late.
No, it's all right, could you stand, stand up so everybody can hear you?
Um, I was just kinda catching up on what I'd missed, um, and they said, uh, Chris, my husband and I, we don't live in City Limits, but we're very involved in the community, and somebody had said that you can petition to annex your property into City Limits. Who do you petition? That means nothing, I need a name, I need something, I need... Okay, great, thank you.
So, I see, I see there's a great value in being a city resident, because you have a voice, you have a vote. But, the county residents are the ones that are, I mean, almost half of our, our population of the people that are getting serviced by the city are not city residents. How are we showing concern that we, we want to take care of those individuals as well as city, uh, city residents?
Well, uh, you fall beneath the county, so you're, you're elected official of your county commissions, and it'll people take care of you. But, if you're asking, how can the city of Crestview make sure we're taking care of all the people living there?
Yeah, exactly, how can we accommodate those people that are using our city?
You know, like, like Cal just said, you are as welcome as anybody else in the city to come in front of the city council and say, you don't even say, "I'm not a resident, but I have a business," or, or, "I use your city's resources, and I don't like this, this, and this, what can you do?" Now, you come in front of the city council and tell us what you need, because, you're right, uh, so many people that live in the county are gonna use our resources, they use our roads, don't ask about State Road 85. All, all the other roads, okay? They use our roads, uh, they use our parks, they use our resources, and, and so we need to accommodate you, but you have to come and tell us what you need, contact your city councilman, you visit a website, find out who they are, uh, give them a call, email, whatever. But to me, I, I personally, I prefer people coming to say, calling me. Uh, I can tell you, I get a fair amount of people call me up and say, "Will you meet with me?" And I, I sit down and meet with them, I take time with them. And I don't get paid overtime, either.
Okay, so you personally, how often do you, are you, there's communities within the city, there's neighborhoods, how often do you go out and talk to members of that community? Or is that something that you offer, or is that something that you just wait for somebody to request?
I would tell you personally, and I can't speak for, for other council members, okay? I spend a lot of time doing city council business, not necessarily going home to home, but this morning I was at a, at an event for the city council, uh, at a, at a breakfast. Then I had a four-hour meeting with the CRA this afternoon, and I'm out here in the evening. To be able to go and just visit with people, uh, no, I can't say I do that in a residence. Now, if I, I had a lady that sent a letter saying that if any elected official lived on PJ Adams, that they would do something about that project. So I went and knocked on the door. I said, "I'm your neighbor, I live in PJ Adams. You know, what's the issue?" Issue she had was less an issue than I have. She was concerned about the parkway coming close to her house, my house is closer to that new freeway than her house. So I understood where she's coming from, I have the same frustration, I can't change it. That parkway's going through, whether JB Witt likes it, or anybody likes it. But, if somebody notifies me, if, if they have an issue in their home, and I can't visualize it, I'll go to their home and look at it. The lady said, uh, "I don't believe that I'm violating the setback." And I couldn't tell by looking at the picture, so I knocked on the door and said, "I'm here to look at your setback." You know, I looked at it, and technically she was violating the setback, so, you know, so I will come out, but just to go around, I'll start in businesses. In fact, I've got a, I've got a opening statement I use, when I go into business, I say, "I'm here from the city government, I'm here to help you," and we both burst out laughing, because, because, you know, it, it, it's kind of a joke, you know, and I don't say it to demean my own government, I'm saying it because most people think that when the government says they're gonna help you, they don't really mean it. So I walk in and say that, we kinda get loosened.
Well, I'm not saying just you going to personal, uh, going personally to house to house, but just having, just like this, a town hall meeting for, for homeowners association or something like that.
If anybody, I made a list, when I, when I became a councilman, I made a list probably this long, of all the civic organizations in the city of Crestview. I sent them, either went there and sent my personal invitation, "Do you want me to come and speak to Kiwanis? Yes. Want me to come speak to Rotary? Yes. Want me to come speak to American Legion? No answer. Want me to speak to Alliance? No answer." So, I reach out to the different organizations, and I'm willing to come out and speak to them. I started... I started out having town hall meetings my very first month, in April of 2015. You want to guess how many people showed up from the city at my first meeting?
You, one?
No, one person showed up from the city. My wife was there, because she goes to me every place. Teresa was there, because she's the executive assistant to the city council. And one person from the county was there, and only one person from the city of Crestview. Now, it would have been easy for me to say, "Well, people don't care, I'm not going to do it." So, the next month I had one, and I had five people. Okay, the third one, I had eighteen people. But I wasn't smart enough to figure out what I needed to do, and I finally figured it out, I needed to have a theme. If you just say, "Do you want to come and speak to Councilman Whitton?" People say, "Who's he? You know, what's going on?" So, if I came up with a topic like this, okay, last topic, homelessness I had in December, forty people, okay? Big change from one up to forty. So, I'm not standing here and telling you I'm doing everything right, but I'm telling you, I am reaching out, and if I reach out anymore, I won't see my wife.
JB, if I could mention, one thing, as you mentioned, Paul, ago, about receiving any services from the city, like with our fire department, we have a memorandum of understanding of all the fire departments in the area. We answer every call, whether it's in the city or out of the city. Like the county residents, their fire station is NOFD, North Oaklissah Fire District, out at the airport. If you're around I-10 or that area, Crestview Department is always there before they arrive, because of the distance, you know, they can be there within five minutes. But we do have rules. We start fire protection, whatever needs to be done, when they arrive, then they're in charge, and we back off and assist them. And so, that's the way we do. And the police, like, if it's in the county, and it's a police matter, it's the sheriff's department that arrives. However, we stand ready to assist them, and they stand ready to assist us. We ask for their help a lot of times. So, we try not to think about city boundaries when it comes to people's safety and everything, so we do work that much. And like she said before, we do, we do give sewer and water to lots of county residents. They have to pay for their bills, a little bit more, but we do try to help out. I consider everybody Crestview residents as people of Crestview. And, you know, we're excited about what's, I'm very excited about what's coming out at the airport, because Northwest Florida State College is going to have an avionics school out there, which is going to make a major impact on all this area, not just Crestview, but all of North Oaklissah County. And I'm excited about that. That'll be coming on, I talked to the president yesterday, it's probably going to happen about July, that they'll start getting that thing kicked off, so we need to work together. I think Crestview, I think everybody, just not city limits, because we have to work together, because a lot of people down south forget us.
Yes.
So, one thing I just want to finish on, and I know there's people here from the county as well, but, you know, they're, the city officials that we've got here, mayor, city clerk, Mr. Whitton, I mean, it's not the individuals themselves that I think, it's really not. If you come in and you talk to them, I mean, I've met with the mayor several times, I mean, Mr. Whitton, you've met with me whenever I've called, all of them have been really good. It's more, when we're talking about these issues, it's the system that you guys are stuck in. So, I really want to make sure people know, I've read tons of stuff on Facebook and just have gone all the way down the line, you guys are getting assaulted.
One over.
And it's really not the individual, they are truly making an effort, and I think there's not a single person here that doesn't want it to be better. So, maybe we can come up with a creative way to annex everyone in, we just waive the fee for like six months if you annex it. So, anyways, but again, thank you for everything that you're doing, because it is helping.
Any last questions, any comments? I'll ask you questions, you answer. All right, well, I appreciate you all coming. I really, I really enjoy doing these things, because I get public input. I think it's a more relaxed atmosphere than coming in front of the city council. In front of the city council, you stand up at a podium in front of a microphone, and, you know, it can't be intimidating, having five people sitting up there in suits and ties. And so, this is my chance to be able to communicate with you one-on-one here, and I thank you so much for coming. And the only thing I'd like to ask you, make sure you pay your bill before you leave, so I don't get stuck with you. Thank you all for coming.